Welcome to the May 9th, 2024 in-depth city council meeting. Cindy, would you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Lamby.
Present.
Councilmember Osborne.
Present.
Councilmember Gordon.
Present.
Councilmember Brockert.
Present.
Councilmember Gingerich.
Present.
Councilmember Lewis.
Present.
Councilmember Clonard is absent, so six present and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, next is the approval to adopt the agenda. Does council or administration have any items that you'd like to change or pull from the agenda?
Your Honor, I do. I'd like to have C removed from the agenda.
Is there any other questions? All right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So move Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Osborne. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item is for A's an update on the great tagline search. Welcome. This is going to be great, right?
That's right.
We saved the picture.
What's that?
Saved the picture.
All right, Kevin Jensen, Communications Manager for the City of Muscatine. How are you all tonight? Another, just come back to council, kind of give an update on how it's going and what we're doing, and then what the next steps are. So... Basically, the direction I am seeking is just for you to review the ones that I have proposed or put together from three different sources. Some of them are good, some of them are bad, some of them are in between. But I would really appreciate you looking those over, kind of judging which ones you might favor. The other part of that is that if there's ones that you'd like to modify, you know, change words or remove words, you can do that as well. Or you can suggest different taglines. Now, the slogans are a little bit different because they can be a little bit longer than a tagline. But we can get into that later. It's something rather unique. So this kind of a refresher as to why we brand. What we're really trying to do is create a... Something memorable that people can remember when they think of Muscatine. Something that'll drive the people here. Not physically, but personally, mentally. Bring them here and give them reasons to stay. The marketing of Muscatine is something that has been on staff's mind for quite a while now. And we are working with the chamber and a few things to do that. But we need to start with something, a tagline, or, and/or a slogan to really push it out there and give people something to think about when they come to Muscatine. It's a way of investing in Muscatine. As it says, "Muscatine is where a small-town ingenuity turns into unbounded enterprise." That's kind of an example of a slogan that you could use. It's really too long for a tagline. But it is a part of putting something together to promote Muscatine. Oops, I should have gone to that one. I get talking too much and forget about the slides. I've always liked that picture. I kind of hope we can do some more decorating downtown for the holiday season. Taking pride in Muscatine is another thing that we want to instill with these taglines. We have so much to be proud of. From our history, our culture, the current industrial presence, the current workforce, the small business owners. We just can't say enough for, about the people and the operations that we have here. Some of them are included up there. That's not, you know, not just a short list of things that we can take pride in. Of course, that, the Rose Garden is going to look pretty nice here in a little bit, even better when we do some modifications to it. So the things that we want to target when developing our brand for the future, and the taglines, is remembering our vibrant community goals, the healthy community, and the historic community. All these things play a part in what makes Muscatine unique, other than it's the only Muscatine in the world. But those are things that we want to consider, not just in developing a tagline or slogan, but also in whatever marketing we do, whatever promotion we do and materials we make to really get some of those people, the word out to them people. I have been playing around a little bit, just by myself. These are just examples of what could be. We have no plans to change the sunburst or the word Muscatine, which has, had been our tagline, for several reasons. One, if we don't change that logo, we don't have to change the implements on all the trucks and everything, and all the shirts. That might be a little bit costly, but we can add to it. And that's where some of the taglines come in. Different ways to do it. I gave you an example of a news release that I put out where the hidden gem of the Midwest is in the upper-left-hand corner. I've done some others just to, and nobody's really noticed, but that's okay. Just kind of see what they look like and see if anybody would notice. The example on the right is just a different way of doing it. I'm not the greatest graphic artist in the world, but I try my best. These are two of the logos or taglines we have now are the logos and tagline. Just basically, I inserted "City of" above "Muscatine." The one on the right is one of our primary colors for our website. So that's another thing that we can use is the, we have five different colors that we use on our website. So we want to take advantage of those as much as possible. Again, here are some others. Pearls of opportunity, Pearl of Mississippi, of course, just another couple of the taglines that were gleaned from the report that the students did 2011 or way back when. And then the most recent one in 2017 that we went through, which we won't speak of. This is just an example of what we could do if we wanted to further bring in the different departments and give them their own logo. Some of them already have department-specific logos, fire department, police department. Parks and Recreation already has one that they have. I don't know how long they've had it, but it's been around for a while, as long as I've been here. But these are different things that we could do, just playing around with the color and with the location of the logo and the tagline. So we get down to, and I won't go through all these, but I provided you with a list of the different taglines that have been mentioned. I have talked to staff, I've talked to members of the Collaborate Muscatine Marketing Team, talked to individuals within the community, just trying to get their idea. Some of those are included here. Some of the other ones that they said don't even show, I agreed with, and so they're not there. But this is a, quite a list of different possibilities. And again, nothing is written in stone right now. I'm just looking for guidance, for suggestions. And since you are all going to make the final decision anyway, what better people to ask for their opinion than the council? Here's possible slogans that can be used. And the reason we do these is because now that we can have them at the bottom of our letterheads or any of the letters we write, or, not that the Mark Twain quote isn't good enough, but, you know, you want to do something different. You don't want to keep the same thing all the time. But we can use these with the apartment stationary, which is one of the things we want to standardize, and make it so that we are pretty cohesive, we have one way we use the brand and everything. So these are just possible ones that you can review and look over. I think there's some that really go well with... Let's see if I can move this. One of the ones I really like is, as far as the slogan, is "The best parks, trails, and public facilities this side of the Mississippi." I don't, I know, I would just say best parks, trails, and public facilities in this area, or whatever in this region, on either side of the Mississippi. I think that's one of the greatest assets we have right now is the recreational facilities. And since it's growing and becoming more used, some of those things we can actually tie into these slogans. Strong history with ties to the Mississippi River, that's why we're here. The Mississippi, the bend, I won't say use the word "great bend of the river", because I was using the previous tagline hunt. But things, you know, tying the river into whatever we use, tying some of the big companies that have, that were founded here, that are still here. I think one of the things that we have to remember is, you know, there's corporations such as, you know, King Corporation, who are actually bringing people back to Muscatine and consolidating their services here and changing, going to be changing the landscape down on Grandview Avenue and everything like that. So those are some of the things that we have to think about. So what I plan to do for the next steps is I'll gather your input. You can either fill out the paper that I gave you, you can email me, and coffee Carol. And just let me know your thoughts and ideas. So my next step would be to create a list of five to seven taglines specifically. I'm not worried about the slogans right now. Put together a survey, and before we release it to the public, I will, again, make sure that you all see it, make sure you're all comfortable with it. We'll give it to the public, we'll promote it. And we've had a pretty good response in previous surveys, so I think we should have a good response here. Who knows what we're going to get? But I think in the end, hopefully sometime the end of the summer or something like that, we'll have a solid list of one, two, or three favorite taglines that we can bring and let you all discuss and see which one you want to proceed with.
So of the options presented, is there one that stands out to council?
Just got a couple of questions.
Sure.
Not a marketing guy, so take it back to the basics. Tagline and slogan, one of them is kind of part of the logo, or?
The taglines we can, we'll be able to use with the logos because normally, taglines are four to five words long. They tend to try to keep them as short as possible. But they also deal with something specific about the community that you're trying to promote.
Something more enduring than?
Something more enduring.
Slogan would be something like?
Slogan can be rotated, and I'm not saying the taglines can't be rotated periodically, you know, if there's, if that's what, you know, council would like to do. And certainly, I'm not opposed to it. The slogans, like I said, we could get them and make them department-specific so that each of their stationary has their own specific slogan on it, if they so wish. And I would be more than happy to work with the departments on that. I have spoken to some of them, so we're getting there.
So you could go tagline, whatever, but then, yeah, each department may have its own turn on it, or?
Yeah, it's, you know, what, once we establish the tagline, I'll finish, put in together the branding guidelines. I'll let, give it to Carol and let her review it to make sure that everything's okay with it. And then we'll present the guidelines to you for your approval.
Councilmember Lewis?
So are you asking today what council would like us to do? Is that what you're asking?
No.
Okay.
Nope.
Just checking.
I'm just giving you a list.
I know which ones I like already, so it's like?
Well, that's fine.
I was going to say, and the first component is which one stands out to you?
So to me, the Pearl of the Mississippi, I mean, that grabbed me anyway. We talked about that before. And as far as slogans, I like "Where the River Flows and Dreams Grow." It just rolls off the tongue easy. But great job on all the research.
Brad, Mayor.
Councilmember Lamby.
So Kevin, just to make sure, you're not proposing that we change all of the signs, logos, and stuff around the community?
Nope.
By moving forward with this, we're not saying, well, we're going to spend dollars changing all the logos on the, on the vehicles, on our signage, or anything like that. We're not, we're not proposing that.
No, no, we've got big enough change coming with the wayfinding signs that are going to go up here, the, over the next five years. And I, you know, we could incorporate some of that, those graphic designs into, into this. I don't know how well that would work, or whether it'd be cost-efficient. But right now, what we're looking at is just trying to update, upgrade the taglines. The local is fine, we don't have to mess with it. But I just?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we weren't talking about spending dollars to change all those signs and stuff, so, okay, I'm good.
Councilmember Gingerich?
Thank you, Mayor. I, you know, respect your work and the work of the community committee that's helping you out, you know, and so forth, too. But to me, Muscatine will always be Pearl of the Mississippi. And I've, I don't always... I've said before, I'm not going to change my mind, and then I've had to change my mind. But, you know, I'm pretty committed to the fact that Muscatine is the pearl of the Mississippi. And then I think, you know, I like the taglines to be appropriate, maybe for whatever brochure or advertisement or whatever might coincide with that. For instance, in my highly creative mind for marketing, Muscatine, Pearl of the Mississippi, where dreams flow. For like an educational program, that Bobby would certainly want to pass out, you know, on his brochure. But, you know, I guess I've, I've, you know, said or made my point that we're the pearl of the Mississippi and taglines that can accompany, you know, that, that strong statement to me is a great thing to do.
And you're certainly correct that we could vary these as to the different marketing campaigns that we want to run. And certainly, our partners in the community, the chamber and other, MPW and others have... We're more than happy to share these things with them for their marketing materials. And after all, we're, you know, we're one big team and we're just trying to, you know, get the people here and keep them here and give them a safe and happy place to live and grow and raise family.
And before, Councilmember Brockert, can you repeat that? Councilmember Gingerich, what you mentioned, the pearl of the Mississippi? And then you had a couple other?
Well, I think everything we should promote is being the pearl of the Mississippi.
Yep.
And then to add a tagline that supports a specific department or ideas, you know. But, you know, once again, I'm not?
You said "where the dreams flow."
Because you mentioned, you mentioned the pearl of the Mississippi where the?
Where the dreams flow.
Where the dreams flow.
Which I loved.
That was good.
I thought that was great.
It was really good. See, you are creative. This is good. Good job.
Miss, miss?
Councilmember Brockert?
As I told Kevin earlier, at four o'clock this morning, none of these appealed to me at all. It's probably due to lack of sleep or something else. Anyway, Pearl of the Mississippi, I'm perfectly happy with. But I, and some of these others have possibilities. I think they need to be reworded, scratch out a few words. But for the slogans, I don't know.
Yeah, and like I said, I'm not too worried about the slogans right now. I think those are things that we could work on later. Once we get our tagline and logo tagline, whatever we would do with that, down, and we put it together with the branding guidelines, then we could determine how we want to do slogans, whether we just want to be department-specific with them, whether we just want to have one overall generic one, and then allow the departments to kind of say, you know, they want something more specific geared to what they do, you know. Parks and Recreation, the Fire Department, the Police Department, they all have specific things that they do that you may want to highlight in that, in the slogan, so.
Yeah, we don't have anything about the bridge. We have something about the bridge being a bridge to opportunity. You know, when you come over from Illinois, you know, anything's better than Illinois.
There's a lot of creativity over here on this side. You guys have to step it up over here.
Can't compete.
Councilmember Gordon?
Thanks, Mayor. You heard me a long time ago, I prefer the logo that we have now. I think it's, it's a good, solid logo, recognizable. My desire, as I've said before, is the consistency of brand, coming out with that brand guideline, so that we're not using different fonts and stuff throughout all of our different documents that we create. Because we have to be branded as Muscatine. And that's been a gap for many years, and we haven't had a brand. And we came out with a new website without a design guide, which I'm still shocked. And if we're going to make a slogan, we got to make it so it's solid, that it's Muscatine. And we can't say something that half of the United States has, like "best parks, trails, and public..." And I know it sounds great, but I'll tell you, there's a whole lot of west of the Mississippi that probably can make the same claims. So whatever we make as a claim, "river flows," "rich history," "innovation," those are great words. We need to make sure that we, we hold true to that slogan. And I won't go with the tagline because you guys are the pearl of the Mississippi. I'm sort of over the pearl. But it is what it is. But please, this, make sure that we come out with a brand guideline that is consistent branding for the City of Muscatine.
That is the goal.
Thank you.
Any other comments regarding what stands out or what you'd like to see?
I'm good.
Okay. Do you have any other suggestions for taglines to add to this list, which we kind of just touched as well? So do you guys like the direction that we're going? Okay.
I kind of like the one that had the story to tell. Would I change it to maybe, if these shores could talk?
There you go.
Oh.
Write that down. Get it to me. Just remember, we're one of a kind.
Yes, we are.
That's the one and only. Ones that is getting a lot of traction, so.
Oh, is it? Okay.
That'd make me want to open up and want to know what in the heck's going on in Muscatine, that the shores are going to be talking.
Any other comments or questions, council? All right. Thank you, Kevin.
You are more than welcome.
All right. And next, we have parking meter technology.
This is an overall presentation. Basically, a lot of staff have been working on this since budget ended six to eight weeks ago. So I've got some of those people here. Lori Moss, who was filling in for Cindy last week, she's our parking coordinator, so she's here tonight. Shelley Meyer, who hit her 15th anniversary with the city today.
Congratulations.
She has volunteered over the recent years to fill in for absences in the meter attendant position. And she's become our trainer for the meter attendants. So now we have consistent training for new people as, as we need it. But both of them, as well as the two meter attendants, Leah Brower and Cody Murdock, have all had input into what we're proposing tonight, as well as John Cruisenstein on the IT side and Carol. So we've all had opportunities to voice our opinions. So this is a... The direction sought tonight is, this is mainly informational, to get your feedback. So we want to tie it with the city council goals. And those included technology upgrades, our proposed vendor, which is our current vendor for our current meters. I've got an image in the presentation of the proposed meter and the proposed sleeves and bases. And I also brought those here tonight so we can see them in person. Some of the, and this didn't even start out to be, include sleeves and bases, but when we looked at what they had available and how it can tie to the downtown, people say the meter posts are ugly. But these Victorian things tie with our, our black light, lighting in the downtown. So we're, that's an option, but it is included in our proposal. And then just initial implementation options, and we'll go through a few, but that's... We were even changing our minds after the PowerPoint went out to council. So it's flexible, how about that? So capital costs and funding, and then annual ongoing operating costs with new meter technology. We are proposing meter fee increase to cover the cost of technology. And then there would be, if we move forward on this, there would be changes in the city code, minor changes in resolutions implementing some changes. So if you have questions while I go, feel free to ask them. But mainly, discussion and feedback is what we're looking for tonight. And if you are comfortable to proceed with any steps necessary to implement the meter upgrades. Some of the reason we're here, city council's strategic goals included provisions for modernization of tools and systems that customers use to interact with the city. Specific initiatives for '23-'24. Study the parking system in the central business district and implement identified improvements. A year ago, we went through just an overview of the, the whole parking system, and I passed those out at the meeting last week. And that went into enforcement and number of tickets issued and all that type of thing. So I haven't included any of that in this. This is primarily the increased technology. But based on that meeting a year ago and the number of tickets that are issued... But based on that meeting a year ago, and the number of tickets that are issued, it, I think there was consensus that there's a need for parking enforcement in Muscatine. I don't think there is a possibility of voluntary compliance. And then the specific objective in the parking budget, to gather information on meter enhancements that would allow for acceptance of debit credit cards at the meters, cost of the new meters, transaction costs for accepting these payments, and impact on meter rates would be evaluated. So that's specifically what we're reviewing tonight. Our Pom Incorporated, P-O-M, has been the city's vendor for meters for numerous years. They actually have the national purchasing contract for meters through OMNI, which is formerly the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance. So their cost per meter, that's a locked in for the quantity we would be ordering. And we're looking at their Parktel Solar Smart meters, each with its own modem and 4G SIM. These meters would accept coins, credit and debit cards, and mobile QR code through the user's mobile payment gateways. So there is a flexibility on, people would have options on how to pay for the meters. The price per meter with that OMNI contract for between 101 and 500 meters is $1,270 approximately. It includes a one-year warranty. The sleeves and the bases are completely separate, but each of those is 8860 per set for that same quantity between 101 and 500. They can be ordered in different colors. The black seems to be the appropriate one that goes with other things in the downtown. One of the features, and I didn't write all the features here, is that if they can be programmed, if the city would like it to, to allow a short grace period after it expires. So if somebody put in a half hour, and frequently somebody will say, well, I just missed it by a minute. This would allow for whatever we tell it to, to give them a two-minute grace period. And what that would do, and I don't know if you can see the, you can't see the flashing lights, but the, the time would expire, but the red lights wouldn't go on for two minutes after the time expired. So that's, I think, a nice customer service kind of feature. There's also, and we weren't looking for this, but there's also a, you can change it and have it be in Spanish. So it has a language feature on it as well. Next slide is a, just a picture of what we have here. This is a two-space, this, this meter would cover two spaces, left and a right, and there's buttons that would indicate which, which meter you're going with. Staff has discussed those in, I think what I passed out is like version E of our plan, which would be a combination of two-space meters and one-space meters. We don't want to confuse people, but, and then the next slide is, shows a close-up of the sleeve and the base. And again, we've got samples you can look at behind me. When we first started looking at this, we were trying to, there are 398 parking metered spaces in the downtown. Some are not used very regularly, regularly at all, so it likely is not cost-effective to put a $1,200 meter at every meter location in downtown. Again, though, we don't really want to take those meters out, because people would park there all day if there's not a meter. So we were looking at how we would decide which, which areas would be covered by the new, new meters. So the first, so what I've given here is like our first three iterations of where we were. But those are not all-inclusive. We can do variations. This option A, and it basically is the Olive Third Street, basically the higher-use contiguous area, if we wanted all the meters in there to, to be the upgraded meters. Olive Third Street, and then Walnut, Cedar, Sycamore, and Iowa, from Mississippi Drive up to Third Street. The center metered spaces in Lot 4, which is behind Guadalajara, that's a heavily-used area as well. And the, the metered spaces in the Lot 7 across from City Hall, there's just six of those. So that totaled 213 meters. And at that point, we were looking, well, that, that's 53.5% of the total meters, but yet those spaces generate 75% of the total meter revenue. So we did have our meter attendants pick up just that area, just to see, to verify the higher-use areas. They, they know the higher-use areas, but this confirmed that it would cover a vast And then option B would be only specific high-use meters. And then it wouldn't be Olive Third Street, and it wouldn't go all the way to Mississippi Drive on some of the side streets. But it would include all metered spaces in Lot 4 and metered spaces in Lot 7. So if we, we reduced, took out some of the lesser-used meters, we would be down to 152 And then option C, this is using two-space meters where feasible. And at first, I didn't know how this would work, but I think it's appropriate in certain places downtown. It would involve changing some of the locations of the meter posts, but our Public Works, our Public Works friends have said that they can do that for us.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
We thank Brian and his staff. And then just, and I passed out a map, just going from the map and trying to figure out if we did, if there's five spaces on a, on a block, of course, we'd have, need three meters, two, two-space meters, and one one, kind of thing. And that came out to about 130 meters that we, we would need, but it would cover 218 spaces. So we were, well, I think there was a consensus that we liked the concept of the two-space meters, there might be confusion with people. So after the PowerPoint went out, we also did one that we would have the two-space meters on the angle parking on Iowa Avenue and on the head-end parking in lots, Lot 4. I think that's, there's less confusion there than if you have parallel parking on the street where the meter's in between and one's ahead and one's behind. And there is a learning curve on this. But that's our, kind of our option E, which the map has, and then we, the, whatever color that is, pinkish highlight, Shelley colored the map for me. There's a couple blocks on Third Street that are not high-use, between Iowa and Sycamore and Sycamore and, and Cedar, those are not higher-use, and we may be able to remove those, at least at this time, if that's the way we wanted to go. And then having the rest of the orange highlighted spaces be single meters on the parallel parking. And then, I guess I didn't jot that down. I think that was 156. All these numbers would need to be confirmed before we would place any kind of order, though. But it does give us an indication of what might work. And I'm sure they're giving us time, we can have an option F and G, and, but, but I think, you know, it's the combination of the two-space and the one-space. And some of the, and I will get to that, there's an ongoing cost per month per meter, and the two-space meters counts as one. So in addition to the meter cost itself, which is the same, whether it's two-space or one-space, one-space, the, there's a $5 per month connectivity for the credit debit cards, the QR code payments. So there's, it's a balance I think we need to look for there. But it did put together the capital costs, and I'll just, option A was when we were looking at all single-space meters for 215 meters. The meters themselves, the sleeves and the bases, they would waive their gateway fee for us. We would need their proprietary wand for changing the meter rates in the meters we're not proposing to upgrade. And, and we have done that before, and their previous system was less than ideal. John remembers that. Okay, painful, okay. And then also in this, we're listing, and it's optional, if we wanted to change the, the existing meters to add the sleeves and the bases to the existing meters, and then have, again, our friends at Public Works paint the top of them black, so they would look better. And then at the same time, when those are done, the, the posts would be straightened. So I, the, I think it would improve the downtown and actually add to the historical, historic downtown Muscatine, just the, how it would appear to the public. But that one with the 215 meters and the other items, it would be 307,000. And the footnote on these next three schedules are the same. When the Second Street Streetscaping Project was done, that was, that bonding for that was specifically allowed parking improvements. And it actually said, improving municipal parking facilities, including parking meters. So the funds are available there. Some of it is still a reasonable cost to implement the proposal. And that cost doesn't include shipping with that quantity of meter purchased. And that part of the bond issue is being repaid with TIF funds. So the Second Street, and this is part of the Second Street project. Option B, and this was only for the high-use area, high-use meters in that original area, but that was based on all single-space meters. So that would be 154 meters, again, the sleeves and bases for that, the wand, and the optional sleeves and bases for the rest of the meters, and that would be 229,000. Option C, and this is where, this was basically trying to use two-space meters throughout the area. And that would be 132 meters, the wand, optional, the sleeves and bases, so 201,000. This, option E that we have is slightly more meters, but it should be in the range of option, option B, the 229,000. The increased annual operating cost, and that would be funded from, from rates. And I'm just, I just did one slide on this. It would be, and I did use option C, so it would be higher than that if we went with option E, but $5 per month per meter. So based on 132 meters, it would be $7,900 per year. There's a gateway fee from the meter company of 10 cents per credit, debit, or mobile transaction. And I, it's hard to estimate what that was. I put 1,500 a month, that's probably high. So 1,800 a year for those transaction costs. And then the merchant account fee to get the payments from them through the credit Okay, well, I can't estimate that fee. I do have, from the vendor, we got some examples of the percentage from each payment source in three different communities, and they're varied communities. This first one is from Westfield, New Jersey, population of 31,000 with 168 of these, these meters. But just as an example, the numbers are way higher than ours, but 48% still pay with coins, and 24% paid with credit or debit cards, and 28% paid with the QR code option. So people do want multiple methods to, to pay their meters. This next one is not at all like ours. But it's Monterey, California, population 30,000, but it's on Cannery Row, so it's a high tourist area. And they have a smaller cash payments of 19%, 42% debit or credit card, and 39% QR code. But they can go up to 10 hours at $1.50 an hour, so it's higher, higher cost to park there. And then a smaller one, Dunmore, Pennsylvania, population of 14,000, they have 51 of their meters, and in their case, it's still 86, 86% coin, 10% credit card, and 4% the QR code. So, and that's why it's, it's difficult to know just what our blend of the payment types So we would be proposing a parking fee increase to cover those increased costs, and actually to catch up from when we originally set the current rates. And those, the current rates are 50 cents per hour for two-hour meters, and that's a maximum time on the meters, two hours, and 25 cents per hour for 10-hour meters. That was effective July 1, 2013, so 11 years ago. The Consumer Price Index has increased 34% then, so there's, there's just increased cost of, since then. But then there would... But then there would also be the cost of the $5 per month per meter and the 10 cent per transaction cost, and whatever the credit card fees came out to be. So we are proposing to increase those rates to a dollar per hour for the two-hour meters and 50 cents per hour for the 10-hour meters. And that should cover whatever those merchant fees on the credit and debit cards come out to be. We are not proposing on passing those increased costs on to the parking user. So our ordinance would have the same, whether you paid by debit or credit card, or whether you paid in cash. The difference, and this is actually recommended by the vendor, that for debit or credit cards or the QR code, that the minimum amount of the charge be a dollar. So they're not paying 25, charging 25 cents and having it all taken up by fees. And I don't think that's unreasonable. And I know you can't read this, but the city code changes. And I did read through this. There's multiple references to coin operations. And we would change that language to coin or other approved payment methods, just so it's not incorrect in the code. What can be changed by resolution? Our meter time limits, designation of parking spaces, whether they're two hours or 10 hours, and actually the rates, you know, changing it from 50 cents an hour to a dollar. That can be done by resolution. And as I mentioned before, we are recommending that we change all the meters. The new ones could be set at those rates when we get them, but then change the meters that aren't being upgraded to those same rates. But it would only be if somebody wanted to put a quarter in for 15 minutes. If they have a quarter, that's what they would pay, if they paid cash. It's only if they charge things that we would have the minimum dollar charge. And as I mentioned before, and we have had, Brian and his staff went out and looked at meter posts and what would be required there. And so I think he committed that they could do that work. And then it would be IT and finance and parking staff that would work to, we have to, in the POM system, have the meters tied to the spaces and the meter numbers. So all that would be done by the finance and IT and parking staff. We'll have to do some other housekeeping things. Right now, the yellow payment boxes are attached to the meter posts. And with the sleeves, they probably won't work, but we'll find an alternate solution for that. And then implementation timeline would depend on when we're, if you want to proceed with this, when we're ready to order. But the order delivery time is six to eight weeks, so that's very reasonable. They are made in the United States, and I think they, actually, she said they usually do them a little faster, but we wanted, didn't want to commit to that. But six to eight weeks, once a, once an order would be made. The, and that's basically the presentation. And if there's any feedback, or you want...
Councilmember Gordon?
I'm gonna, thanks Nancy. This is great. I mean, I'm gonna start with like three comments, and then I'm gonna pass it on, because I got a list here. I don't want to hog the whole thing. But first of all, you did meet our goal, which is we need the ability to provide different pay methods for our customers that come downtown. The coins are fine. I still want the pennies, but we don't, so I have to live with it. But we do know that most people are paying with debit card and credit card. By the way, Westfield, New Jersey, huge shopping mecca southwest of New York City. It's a, they have 450 shops. So we're taking them off, even though their size, in theory, is close to ours. They're not a peer city. But my, my first real question is, what other vendors did we look at? Because if we're going to go out, and luckily, we've done business with these folks, but have we found a couple other comparable products to use?
The, with this, and we're finding this with other orders, with city, even equipment things, these purchasing alliances have done some of that homework for us. There's not a lot of companies that supply meters. And there is a benefit to having all of ours under one vendor as well.
And Omnia is a great contract. I mean, we buy, we sell a lot through Omnia. Well, my other comment is, I'm not gonna necessarily be in favor of a cost increase, which is crazy to think, because I would have thought, I would have been. I like the dollar minimum, if you're doing a debit card. I can't see tagging on a $2 parking meter cost if I'm going in to have a meal, and I'm coming out and adding $2. We're not that type of community yet. So I would be a little reluctant to start out with an increase of a dollar an hour. It seems reasonable. It is when I go elsewhere, but I'm just not sure that we're ready for that. But I love the idea of a dollar minimum. And I like the B, I like the mixture. I think that's a little more cost-effective. But what I would love to see out of this is metrics, because you've had to manually sort of create the zones where you're seeing the most activity, right? So I'd like to make sure that what we come out of with metrics or notifications, the technology, is that the attendants have notification, our customers get notification, or that we have metrics to say, these meters get the most action and the most revenue, that type of thing. You had to do it manually, I think, to get an idea.
And some of that is the meter attendants and Shelley, when she's filling in, they know the busy meters. But things also change. You know, so what may not be busy this week, if a business goes in, might turn into something. You know, and we can add to the number of upgraded meters. The cost per meter might be a little higher without that.
That bulk buying.
That bulk buying. But there's the, and I didn't bring it up here, but even the meter posts, we were gonna upgrade the, the meters that aren't being upgraded, do the posts on the street, but some of the off-street meters not have the posts on it. Like right now, the lot that used to be by Pro Hair, it's very, it's hardly ever used now, but I understand somebody's going in there. So things, things do change.
I'll defer my, those are the things that I, again, I would have liked to see a couple more vendors reviewed. I'm probably gonna fight against a cost increase, even though we deserve it, but we also want to pull people downtown. So that's just a couple of my comments.
Before Councilmember Brockert, are we able to add languages on there if needed? Like Ukrainian or Wolof?
Spanish. I'm not sure if we can do Ukrainian.
Just curious with...
I'm not sure what, yeah.
Okay.
The, and we weren't specifically looking at that. We just punched a button, and it's just like, wow, look at this. But some of the, and I call it universal language. It has the Visa, it has the MasterCard, and it has Discover. That's, I think, universal. You don't have to translate that.
Councilmember Brockert?
I have a question and a comment. What's gonna prevent these meters from being hacked, John?
I actually anticipated that question tonight. The, everything is done with end-to-end encryption. And so really, the, the security should not be any larger than using your credit card at any other, at any other location. One thing I do want to make clear is that the city, no city staff, and then no city computers will ever have access to citizen credit card numbers. That's what the, that's what the processing is for. So we don't store that here. We do not have any, any way to even recall that. So that, that is also not a concern. So I'm not going to say with 100% certainty, nor would I ever do that, that it cannot be done. One thing we will do is make sure our staff is trained, when they walk past a meter, to look for scam devices. But it should not be any more of a concern using a parking meter than using your credit card at a, at a local retailer.
Okay, thank you. The other thing is, and this goes back to what Councilwoman Gordon was mentioning, was increasing the rates. We've already got businesses downtown that are hanging on by a thread. And I don't believe this is the time for us to raise rates, even though, you know, if you want to use a nice new meter, then you pay for it. But the ones that aren't being upgraded leave them the way they are as far as rate.
I'm sure I'm speaking a little out of turn, but obviously, that's, that would be a council decision.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Osborne?
Nancy, I think you answered a few of these questions. I'm gonna ask them again, just to make sure I heard correctly. So, yeah, I think I heard Nadine kind of echo on this, too. So it's a, you're talking about, whatever the rate is, you want it across all meters, old meters and new meters?
Yes, that's what we're proposing.
Okay. And then the dollar minimum for the credit card charges, is that just a fee? Is it, is it that plus the time? Or is it just one hour minimum plus more time?
Just a one hour minimum.
Okay.
And that would then cover the 10 cent per transaction.
So if you were planning on staying a half hour anyway, you're just paying for an extra half an hour?
Yeah.
If you were gonna pay for two hours worth, then it didn't really matter, you know? It wasn't...
Right, yes.
Okay. And what is our total meter revenue today, and what is it proposed with your proposal, projected with your proposal?
And this goes back to, and this doesn't include the fees, just revenues. So FY '24 budget, our parking meter fees were 76,000. So if the rate increase didn't make people change their parking patterns, you would double that. I would, I started out trying to estimate these, and without the credit card transactions, it was like I, I was digging myself into a hole. But the, we do have a lot of free parking if people are willing to walk. So people would have different options if they, but it seems like anymore people want to park as close as they can.
Yeah. I mean, how, just for, I mean, how many free spots was it on the riverfront? Is that in here? I looked for it.
I don't know if it was.
That was in last year's presentation, I think.
Yeah, I remember it was in the presentation earlier, but I didn't see it in this one.
But I'm, I'm not, I don't believe it's ever full down there.
Right.
I don't know if you guys, you look. She only pays attention to the meters.
I have the budget pulled up. Is it the levy parking?
Yes.
465 spaces.
1265?
465.
465, okay. That was around 400. That's all I have right now. Well, just my comment I have, I mean, if we go forward with something like this, I, having operated that two-headed one, you know, with you, I'd be in, I know it's more money, but I'd be, if we go forward with this, I'd be in favor with a single one for each parking space. It was, that was too easy to pay the wrong spot, in my opinion. And it's, you know, I, it takes some getting used to with a two-headed one. So option A is the one I'm most favoring. I don't know where I'm at with raising the fees. I tend to lean more to the comments already made at this point. I'd have to think about that more. I gotta do some more math on that. I don't understand why we have so many hours available. We hear over and over again that parking is crunched, parking is crunched. But at, if every hour, if, it's only an eight-hour day that they're forced, five days a week, times 50, 52 weeks a year. And that would be a total opportunity of about a quarter million dollars at 50 cents an hour. But we're only bringing in 75,000. So a lot of these meters are not currently being used.
Their, their usage varies significantly from area to area.
Yeah, something just isn't adding up there. So that's kind of throwing me for a loop right now.
Councilmember Gordon?
Okay, I have another question. Looking at the map, the map is brilliant. Thank you for the map, because I'd like to see where we're paying things or not. I have a question on the current 10-hour meters in Lot 4. Would we be able to repurpose those into another area, like up on Fourth Street? We have regular meters, two-hour meters up there, that probably don't get a lot of action. But being that it's somewhat close to Stanley's and stuff, if we move some 10-hour meters up there, that might make it easier for some of the employees to park up in that area without buying new meters. This would be taking the 10-hour meters out of Lot 4 and moving them up there, so that we can put new meters in Lot 4, because I love that idea. And then therefore making it easier for the Stanley's or the employees down there to get another block closer, is what I'm just thinking. The map just made me think of that.
Are you talking about the parking lot, CBI parking lot?
No, up between Chestnut to Sycamore on Fourth Street, there's meters. I have feeling they're, and they're two-hour meters. What I'm saying is, switch those out to 10-hour meters, because the folks that are down at Stanley's or other employees downtown now have a block closer where they can get to a 10-hour. Otherwise, you have to go down to Lot 4, which is behind Guadalajara. Are there opportunities to repurpose some current meters, the 10-hours, somewhere else to make it easier on employees?
We can change the distribution between two-hours and 10-hour meters separate from this.
Yeah.
And I think that is just a programming, John.
You see what I'm looking at, John, there?
It's, it's actually, wouldn't even be a relocation. What it, what it is, is it's just simply a programming. The way this, the way this tool works is there's a wand that, one of the fantastic things about this would be, we'd be kind of switching technology. But basically, what it works is an attendant just goes up and says, I want this to be a two-hour meter or a 10-hour meter. And they just stick a wand into coin slot, and it reprograms it. So it's not even a matter of physically moving a meter. There is no difference from, technically, with the exception of programming.
I like modernizing Lot 4. I mean, and getting the new technology in there, and, but this takes the opportunity to maybe reset some of the other older current meters and make it easier for some of the people that work downtown. and make it easier for some of the people that work downtown.
And obviously, council could, could make those decisions. One thing I did want to qualify is, what I just said was not entirely 100% accurate.
Darn it!
Yes. There is a difference, because there's a red stripe on the 10-hour meters. I'm correct on that, right? So, but since, since we're kind of proposing this, these heads be repainted, that could be done at that time as well.
All right, thank you. I just, I, I mean, looking at the map and stuff, and I like the 10-hour meters around the courthouse. Makes sense. You're on jury duty, that kind of thing. You've got a lot of, this really helps. So, I'm like, why not add some more 10s if we can, without adding new meters in that area?
Jurors don't have to feed the meter.
Oh, okay. That's right. We get a tag or something, so. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Osborne.
I apologize if you're not prepared for this, but maybe we can get a little bit of information on it. Do you know about approximately when Second Street meters were all removed? Was that about 2003, '04?
It's in the budget, Carol.
And while she's looking at that, I guess where I'm going with it is, how are we doing on spare parts? Are these current, I mean, at some point in time, we're going to be forced to replace these aging meters. This is one way to get longer life for about half of them, because we'd have a lot of spare parts. And so, that's where I'm kind of going with this. I want to know, you know, we, at some point in time, we, you know, we moth, we retired about 86 of them, according to this map. And are any of those left and available for parts, or are they gone? And how are we doing with repairing? Because there's, we do get a lot of complaints about, some of them don't work, some of them work sometimes.
And some of them, with the current, it's the, what's inside the meter. So, that, or is that 200? How much is a replacement? But, but it's not like the $1,200 that includes the casings and everything else.
Right, right.
So, our plan would be to store what we're not using and use them as we need them.
Right. But do we have any of those 86 that we originally retired from Second Street that's still available for parts? Or have they all been used up?
I think maybe they no longer work. Back then, we had, it's hard to know when we changed things, but we had part that, that weren't, that were still mechanical, and they weren't electronic. So, you remember that? You remember, but we don't know when, yeah.
Okay, now, today is what we have available off the shelf, easily replaceable? Or do we have to go searching sometimes to find parts?
No, it's, it's the same Palm company.
So, they've all been upgraded to electronic? And those are readily available parts today?
We can, we have sent them in to see if they can repair them. And then, if they can't, we replace them. We allow, like, I think, 10 new meter mechanisms a year in the parking budget. But with the, and Shelley already has plans to set up the storage area in her... She's an organizer. Set it up out there so we can easily find things. And Brian did not tell her that she couldn't do that, so she'll spend a little time out there.
So, contrary to their, to the current meters appearance, they look really old and ratty. Like, they might be 60 years old or something, I don't know. But the innards are fairly new and readily available?
Yes.
Okay. So, the need to replace these from a reliability standpoint isn't as great as I might have imagined, based on how they appear?
Right. And then, the appearance, if, if we can add the sleeves and the bases to those, the appearance, and they need to be straightened before you can add those. The appearance will improve.
Yeah. Okay.
The two-hour parking, or the parking meters were removed from Second Street in September of 2007.
2007, so pretty close to a couple of decades.
Councilmember Gordon.
I'm sorry. The company, Palm, since we have a relationship with them and everything, can they give us information on the current, the new meters that we're looking at, what their life cycle is? I mean, how often they have to be repaired and anything like that? Can we just ask them what?
We asked them about, there, there was an option for a one-year extended warranty, which was too expensive for what you were getting. John did ask them about the, the life of the batteries. Do you remember what that?
I think Nancy's going to put me on the spot on this one, because I honestly don't recall exactly what the answer is. But I know that we did ask the question regarding battery life, and how often those batteries need to, would need to be changed. There was actually, there's actually two different batteries within the, within the system. And it seemed like there was a, there was a backup battery that if there was absolutely no sun that particular day, we had a solar eclipse that had right over the top of us, that there was a backup battery. But it seemed like the, most of those were on about a seven-year life expectancy. And that was just for the battery itself, which would probably be the lowest of the, of the end. Beyond battery life, I'm not sure that I asked that question on exactly what the life cycle would be. I would expect it to be fairly lengthy.
Because we're going to have to adjust our budget for replacement, whatever that cycle is and stuff. And the batteries, is it something that we'll be able to maintain?
Yes, yes. It's, it's, there's, it's very similar. And Councilmember Osborne talked about the, the heads, the meters appear like they're 60 years old. In all actuality, what you're looking at, probably some of them are 60 years old. Because the housings are still the original housing from when they were the mechanical. So, they may be 60 years old. So, they just have new guts put in them. They have digital, digital guts.
Thanks, John. I appreciate it.
Any other comments, council?
Yeah, I'll go.
Councilmember Lampy.
So, the, again, back to Councilman Gordon, or Gordon's comment. Can we get additional, you know, options from other companies? I know you talked about that, but I'd like to see somebody else other than Palm. And are there other options other than a full meter replacement out there? Is there, I know when you go to other communities, there's ones where I just simply point my smartphone at a sticker or a QR code, and that does it all. It doesn't have the credit card read, but it would still be coin and then smartphone? And can we explore, I'd like to see us explore that option of what would that be? Where I'm just doing it strictly off my smartphone? Because I'm also with John on, that got a little complicated at times, when I was trying to figure out which button I'm supposed to push, when and where. So, even though I'm a little concerned about, you know, people my age being able to operate the smartphone, I think we can eventually accomplish that. But I'd like to see us look at different options other than Palm, and also, other than saying, okay, I've got to go to a meter like that. Can we get one that's just simply a QR code that we put up at the stalls, and I scan it with my smartphone, and I run it off of my smartphone?
Without a coin option?
Well, the, the current coin option, again, I don't know exactly how it would work. But from what I saw, you could have a coin option of our current model, and then, more or less, just put a sticker on the front of that current box. And you would scan that QR code with your smartphone and run your parking meter off of that in there. So, you would still pick up the smartphone option. You wouldn't pick up the credit card, but you would pick up the smartphone option with that sticker, with that sign. You would still keep your current coin-operated meter, but it would be a lot less than replacing all the heads and everything else on our current meters.
That, that's obviously a solution we have and did, did look at. One thing I will state that, from a enforcement standpoint, that is a very tricky solution. I'm not saying it's not possible to do, but if you take a look, I'll turn, I'll turn that here, so you can actually see it. If you look at the meter, it's got flashing red lights on it. And when a meter tenant goes past, and there's a car parked in that spot, and it's got flashing red lights, they know that's an expired meter. If we go to that, which is obviously council's, council's prerogative to do that, they will, the tenant will have, will look at the expired meter and then have to switch into a different program to see if they paid online. And if they did not, then, then they'll have to switch back into a ticketing environment. So, from an enforcement standpoint, I think it's going to be very tricky to work a solution like that.
It's possible, so I'm just switching between...
It is possible, yes.
Yeah, okay. And then, the, the, the annual operating cost? So, that's, if I look at it, it's somewhere around at least 10, plus the unknown portion of that. So, we're looking at, do we have an, even an idea of what the annual operating cost of that system would be? Total, annual?
It's got to be about 75 grand, according to the math they gave us.
And again, it, it depends on how people choose to pay. And that's why the proposal to, for the rate increase was to cover those costs.
It's got to be about 75 grand, according to the math you just gave me.
Right.
Another 75.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, if we're getting 75 in now, and we're trying to raise a dollar, that's another 75,000 to cover the cost. The operating cost, not the capital cost.
Yeah, the annual operating cost is about 75,000 per year for that system.
Right, I mean, there's probably some margin in there, but...
Capital.
I think we're going to see some organic increase, too, just because it's going to be easier for people to add time to their meter and stuff, instead of running out of the, the restaurant and stuff. So, you're going to have an increase. It's not going to be a double.
Yeah, but we can get there with the system that Don was talking about, too, with a whole lot less...
But it becomes an admin...
Except without, you know,
Issue.
Less capital costs and less operating costs.
That's where I'd like to see us talk about, you know, what is, what are, and I appreciate the fact that it is a two-step process for the meter readers to go through. But to avoid a $200,000 capital outlay and a $75,000 annual fee, is it worth the two-step validation process for our meter?
Yeah, I'd like to hear, is that definitive, your comments around the two-step process? I mean, I, I did hear that, but...
That's what I was thinking you'd have to do.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see any other way that would possibly work, work around that. One of the things regarding the two, two-step solution like that would also be that even though we wouldn't necessarily have adjustments, the, the price for the, and we're, we're speaking about not adjusting parking fees. However, most of those systems, there is a additional cost for the citizen when they place that tran, when they do that transaction. So, you know, that, that would obviously be their choice, whether they, whether they do that or not. They would still have the option to use, use a, use a coin payment. But, so, anyway, there would be an additional fees associated with, with that as well.
That's what, you know, err to letting, letting our customers decide what, you know, where they want to spend their money than us baking it into the...
And this would be, if you go to, you know, again, the simpler, less capital-intensive upfront, it would be one way of kind of testing how our clientele, how the people that park down there. Again, to your point about all the different cities, how they want to pay. It'd be interesting to go to that kind of low-cost implementation model, see if more people do continue to put coins in, or do more people start using the smartphone to pay? And then, that would tell us, yeah, they're willing to do the smartphone, and then we can go to something like that. Or, you know, we totally take out the coin ones, because eventually, you know, anecdotally, I was listening to the radio this past week, and there was a young lady that called in, and she was complaining about, what, what are these things that I got to put coins in, in order to park? She had no clue how to operate a coin-operated parking meter. She says, I'm so used to my debit card or my smartphone. She had no clue how to use coin-operated things. Now, you can say all kind of comments about that, but...
Well, and I think that's definitely why we're having this conversation.
We're, I mean, technology and, you know, younger people than me are moving toward the fact that this thing controls everything that they do. And the more we can move toward that, the sooner, I think, we're just going to get that faster of adoption from that group.
I, I lean towards the system that Don described. Some of us have been exposed to that. It's a low-cost option.
It's a low-cost mechan, the, the equipment is low-cost.
It lets the consumer, it lets the consumer decide.
The fees are the same as what you have right here.
No, they're not.
Councilmember Osborne, you got the floor?
Sorry.
Yeah. In my opinion, it lets the consumer be in control more of that decision of their costs. You know, if they want to use the card, they pay for it. If they don't, they use the current meters. There's nothing changed for somebody that wants to use coin. I, in my experience, doing retail in downtown area for the last decade, we started out 10 years ago at about 30 to 40% cash. And in three years, we were down to like nothing in cash. Everything's credit card now. And so, I don't necessarily trust the data that says we're going to have that much coin customer. And this would be, to Don's comments, this, this other solution is a way to get there. Offer what we currently have, not change a thing, and offer something additional that doesn't cost the city anything. It does cost the consumer if they choose to use it. If they choose not to use it, nothing's changed. So, I lean towards that. I think, to your comments, I agree wholly that we're probably at best a dollar-an-hour parking community in the future someday. But we're having to use it all up, just to cover the operating costs today on that.
Well, and with, as opposed to using coin, where we're stuck to nickels and dimes and quarters, our increases in the future can be more smaller increases. So, they're not as shocking, you know?
Right, you know, let's say, let's say we can sustain a dollar an hour someday, some point in time, five years out, one year out, I don't know. But pick a number and add 10 cents a year. You're never going to cut, the operating costs are going to probably go up as well. You know, today, it takes a dollar to cover them, just to break even. And I don't know that we'll ever catch up. And we're investing this just to save the coin that five years from now, I don't really believe is going to be that valuable.
Councilmember Lewis.
I would like, I mean, as far as direction goes, I would like to see, you know, I totally support with looking at, you know, the sticker with, I can tell you, I go up to Davenport all the time, and that's how that, my kids think nothing of pulling out, and they're, in their 30s, and scanning to, to pay for parking. And I know it's kind of awkward for us, because we're not used to it. But I'm going to tell you, in Iowa City where I work, that's how things are done. And it's like, I think the, I like the option of putting a sticker on it, because it's like, I mean, I don't know. I'd like to see what the cost is. You know, if, if we did like, you know, stay with the, the coin meters, put a sticker on it if they want to play with a UPS or whatever.
QR code.
QR code, thank you. See, I'm not techy. QR code, let them do that. If they want to play coin, let them pay coin. You know, and do we just do a test run on maybe four or five of them downtown, see how it goes in the busy areas? And if that's where, where it lands, then, like Don said, then we can purchase the bigger ones. I would just like to see a little bit more data on, you know, if there's just a sticker, we can stick on there with the QR codes and go from there.
Basically, before we make the investment?
Yep, before we make the investment. Yep, I'd just like to see that information.
Any other questions, council?
I'd just like to comment that I think it'd be a good idea to get some figures on the alternative option, you know, and some plans for me to review more specifically. As per Councilman Lampy's initial thoughts. I, you know, people have been, gone to a lot of work to put A, B, and C together, and I appreciate that, too.
Yes.
I'd like to maybe explore another area, too.
Is there any objection to have Nancy go explore other options, council?
The sticker.
The sticker.
Including, including the sticker?
Just so that we in the public are clear, the stickered option is, nothing changes about our current meters. We can march ahead with our current meters, and if people don't want to use it, because it costs a little more, that's good data to have.
Right.
It doesn't really cost us a whole lot upfront. Now, I am concerned about the two-step process. If we've got meter readers carrying around two sets of hardware, that gets...
Definitely, it would be time-consuming on their part.
I really want to dig into that before we decide if it, I don't know what we can do, but let's give that some thought.
We need to understand that better, is right, agreed.
I wouldn't want them carrying around two sets of hardware and...
Go ahead, sorry.
I don't know that it would be too... I don't know that it would be two, two pieces of hardware. It would probably be as, two different applications running on the same device. I, I'm, I'm jumping to an assumption here, but I, I would suspect that that would be the case.
Okay. Yeah, it's unfortunate, but maybe it's a trial run. The other thing would be if, if we got to enter into a multi-year contract with that, that sticker company, for lack of a better term, you know, that's a consideration too. We, you know, because if we're thinking of it as a gather data, fight, figure it out, see if it works, and we're caught, caught in a five-year contract, that makes a difference.
Yep.
Councilmember Lewis?
With all that being said, I do like the fact of giving it a facelift with putting those black. I like that part because it's going to make it regardless if it's old, new, or in between. I think the, the base will definitely clean up and make the, the downtown look nice.
I do like, I do like the new appearance. I agree. That would be something.
If we do the bases and paint the 60-year-old shells black, flat black.
Give them a facelift. Mayor, may I ask a little, just some clarification on direction?
You may.
Okay. So, so you want us to look at using existing meters with a sticker that will allow for a, online, some type of online payment? So that's option one. Option two is you said you wanted us to look at more technologies? And I want to make sure I understand, technologies that do the same thing that the Palm meter does? Just some different companies? So something that, okay, I just don't want to send staff down a, you know, rabbit hole on those things, so.
And on that, I think Carol and I both looked for other companies. There aren't that many companies in the parking meter business.
Yeah, I think maybe, I think maybe that, it sounds like you've already done some of the homework on that. Maybe it's just presenting the pros and cons of each and like you did, probably got, it's just, decision maker, it's based on pros and cons of each.
They're actually just kind of hard to find, honestly. We did a lot of.
You only got two or maybe one and a half and this one's not complete, that's okay. Just present it.
The one I, the one I used last, yesterday in Davenport, when I went to Biztown, it literally took, I don't know, 10 seconds to scan it with the phone. You just know a QR code, just take a picture of it and pay right there. I mean, it's Apple Pay, done.
Maybe it's looking for two of those types of options because we've heard from one, but is there another one?
Yep.
Correct.
Absolutely.
Maybe we start there.
Plenty of them, yeah.
So I, I do appreciate the effort. I was really excited about this. But I didn't know the price tag. I knew it was going to be a lot. And it's got me hesitating. I think it's got everybody hesitating. It is a, you guys did wonderful work though. I mean, I, just a little bit more, please.
There, there's some, some things I want to just point out and we can definitely do this. But as far as people's appetites for technology, the downtown users, I think, are very people that there will still be significant coin people. Just an example with the pet, pet data, the pet licenses. And we only have a couple of months under our belt. But half of them are mailing in the applications. They're not doing them online. And we had a few people come to our office and we're almost in tears that we couldn't help them like we usually did. And the one lady actually wanted to give Shelley a tip for helping her. And, and the technology scares a lot of people. So I think we have, we do have a mix and a good mix of people that use downtown, people that come down for lunch. And they'll, they'll pay the meters and.
Well, I think you're making.
But then some of it is if, if on these QR codes, if it doesn't make the meter look expired, then why did you not give them a ticket and you gave me a ticket?
Yeah.
And here you would know, no matter how it was paid, just that, that it was.
Yeah, I do think that's the biggest, one of the bigger drawbacks of the stickers. You can't look at it until it's been expired. You just got to know that. But on the other hand, for those that don't like the tech, nothing changes. You know, we've still got the old meters. I mean, that was difficult to walk through when you and I tried to do that together.
But if we had single-space meters, I, I.
Yeah, and that's why I said I'd go with that.
You would have that same issue. The other thing I want to just throw out is that we pick the dollar just because we have it. Part of it is catching up with cost of living. 38% increase in the cost of living since we last set the rates. And with the division of how many would pay by what payment method, we put out the, that double the rates. We could make it 75 cents an hour.
Well, I'd really like to not guess. I want to know what the operating costs will be with.
But you can't, you can't get that if you don't know how people are going to pay.
Understand, but if you can do some reasonable assumptions and list those, I can, I can think about it. Right now, all I know is it's 75 grand and it's a dollar. And, and we're eating up all of our operating costs and I don't know that we'll sustain more than a dollar a parking space.
The, of course, you don't remember the parking budget that we went through. The parking fund, the, it hasn't, it's, it's been decreasing in fund balance because without increasing the rates and our costs increase.
Yes.
So that's, it's all of a, kind of a catch-up is what we were proposing.
Maybe if you could paint that picture a little bit better. I know you don't want to get into that level of detail, but if you give us the assumptions, you know, and things change, I know that, but. I mean, right now, based on the math, we're going up 75,000 dollars.
And, and when I was trying to put it, I was allowing for like a 15% decrease in the usage.
So that's a little bit more information.
You know, but, but that's like out of the air. I mean, people still don't want to walk. And they used to, they used to walk.
Used to walk to school.
Yeah.
So to basically sum.
uphill both ways.
So basically to summarize, so we like the look of the black sleeve, the pole, everything black. Maybe paint the current ones if we end up deciding to keep it black, but we don't have to decide that absolutely yet. But to have options as far as to potentially add just a sticker or to have something like that. Okay, great.
Yep, I agree.
All right, very good. Thank you, Nancy. All right. Councilmember Gendrich, anything you'd like to share tonight?
I do.
Okay.
I'll be brief. The discount for senior citizens on their power and water bill needs to be increased by $2. And I'm serious about that. I hope council thinks about that a little bit and finance and Public Works and our city administrator. But I think we need to increase that. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Brockert?
I'd be in favor of that, Councilmember Gendrich. I, I want to thank Nancy and her staff and Kevin for all the work that they put into their presentations tonight. And I look forward to seeing what we come up with.
Councilmember Lewis?
I have nothing tonight, your mayor.
Councilmember.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Osborne?
I'd like to thank the organizers and the volunteers that showed up to help clean up Wingweed Park today, particularly the pond area. And make a small pitch for the wagon that we're hopefully getting at some point in time. That'll help those kinds of volunteers be more active. Sip and shop in the downtown area tomorrow evening. It's a long-held event, very successful, a lot of help to our downtown smalls. And that's about all I have.
Councilmember Lampy?
Nothing at this time, your honor.
Cindy? Cindy Mr. Webb? Well, I'd like to thank Councilmember Gordon for inviting myself and the chief to Addington to talk about musketeen and the residence. So thank you so much for that.
Well, thank you for coming. You guys did great.
Yes. And I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.